All rise for the pledge, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Here.
Here.
Master Coleman.
Here.
Here. He's absent today. Okay, so today, obviously, Mr. Serena's not here today, so I'm filling in for him as a fake chairman, we'll call it fake chairman, sure?
Sure.
I know all these people are gonna be here, I would've dressed up, I just came from the basketball game, it's supposed to be a quick presentation, so I just want everybody to know that tonight is strictly a budget presentation from the superintendent. There's no public comment, there's no committee comments, he just gives us the presentation, and then next week, we have a public hearing where everybody comes and you can say, you know, say your piece and anything you want to add or, you know, you want to talk about, that's the time to do it. And the same for all of us, too, it gives us a week to look everything over. So tonight will be pretty much just Mr. Hasham talking the whole time, unless anybody wants to make a motion to have Mr. Serena removed from the committee? No? Alright, well if not, then I'm gonna turn the mic over to Mr. Ser- uh, excuse me, Mr. Superintendent over here.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright.
If you haven't already gotten one already, the budget, the budget, proposed budget is in the back of the room. It's also available on the website as well. The school committee has their copies that we got earlier this week. So what you have in front of you, just gonna do a quick little overview, and then I'll get to my presentation part. If you, if you look at it, the first part is my budget letter, doing a pretty, you know, quick overview of what we did as far as the budget goes. Then you'll see the the budget requests that are above what FY24 was, and then you have the lot, then you see item by item, all the budgets in detail. So when you have some time over the next, over the next week before the budget hearing next week, you might want to make yourself familiar with it, does anything I say tonight that triggers a thought, make sure you make a note of it. If you're looking at the budget, you know, later on, and something comes up or you see something that doesn't quite make sense, just by all means make note of it, and I can address any problems or any questions you might have. So first, I want to thank everybody as I present the FY25 budget. The FY25 budget is, and I might as well get the number out there right away, because that's gonna be the head of it all, is thirty-four million, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. That's the budget ask of my proposed budget. Alright? This reflects the FY24 budget where we're sitting right now. It adjusts for the contractual increases that are in the, that have been worked out between the units, clerical, paraprofessional, and teacher. It also reflects the fact that this is the first budget we've had since the pandemic has brought us back and the emergency funding is running out. So ESSER, if you see that in there, that's the emergency funding, funding grant that, that districts have gotten because of the pandemic. That being said, our district has been extremely diligent in trying to use that for what it was intended, and try to keep salaries for the most part out of it. We did have an advantage over other districts because of the pandemic when we were coming into new buildings, so one of the big things was ventilation and whatnot, so a lot of, a lot of communities had to scramble for that. Meanwhile, we dealt with trying to make sure that all the teachers had the medical supplies they needed, and then there is some funding that we did in there to make sure that we had what we needed during the pandemic, but that's no longer available and no longer gonna be available after September. So we developed this budget in collaboration with principals. I asked my principals, I asked the executive directors, the coaches, to go back to their buildings and try to determine needs for each building, each department, each little area that you might forget about. So I had them do that. And then I met, then the principals met with the executive directors of pupil personnel, finance, and curriculum to get any questions they had, so make sure that they were asking for what they needed out of their budget and what was school-based versus what would be district-based. Principals went back to their school councils, got their feedback. They were asked to, I was asked, I asked them to submit to me budget requests. We, I then met with the central leadership team, we looked them over. Each principal then met with me and the central leadership team to explain needs and try to justify it. All said and done, it's been about a two-month process already. So I do want to thank all my principals, I want to thank my executive directors, Ms. Train, and Ms. Turbin, and Ms. Andrews. They've done a ton of work already on this to make this document represent what we stand for as a district. Now, I've gone through this many times, and there are three, and I'll, I'll go through this Google slides for you, and I'll go back and forth between the slides and your budget notes, but there's a district focus that is ongoing. We, I've really tried to stay the course of this, we developed a five-year strategic plan. These are the three big areas that we've targeted for this year and moving forward. We're trying to provide all students with a standards-aligned consistently, outstanding instructional and supportive learning environments. That means we've updated our curriculum, that we're providing professional development to our teachers, and we're making sure our students have what they need to be successful in the classroom. We're trying to support the teachers through coaching and professional development, so that they have the support they need. And the third one, which doesn't really cost us much money, and you're not gonna see it necessarily reflected in the budget, so this is gonna kind of drop off per se tonight, is strength in communication, and that's what I've been trying to work on since I took over about a year ago. And that is make sure that the communication process is there. Okay? I'm making sure that the principals are communicating, making sure the teachers are communicating, making sure that you have what you need. So that's a huge part of it, that's not a big money ask. The other two, not so much, those are monetary asks that need to be addressed. So we have a mission statement that I'll just read really quickly to you, you, it's on the website and everybody has it, but it's, it's really what we're trying to strive for, and when I asked my principals to consider what they needed in the budget, I asked them to specifically make sure their needs match our goals and our mission. Otherwise, we fall off track. So our mission is, the Saugus Public Schools provide a safe, supportive, inclusive environment where all educated, all educators are supported and valued, the community is engaged and welcome, and the students are inspired and thrive. Okay? And that really lines up with what we're trying to do with the district focus. So with that in mind, principals talked to their staff, leadership talked to itself, and we came up with key areas of need to move forward. So again, before we're doing this, we're trying to find the boxes up that we need in order to be successful, in order to meet our goals. And I've talked about this a lot, the first one, and the fir- I kind of grouped this into two different areas. This one right here is I'm trying to provide transparency to make sure that you real, that you know today, and you will know moving forward, that our plan is strategic, it's targeted. We're trying to keep track and make sure that we're aligned to our mission, our vision, our strategic plan, and the district improvement plan that you adopted a few months ago. That's what we're trying to accomplish, that roadmap is already there. And I'm trying to target that and make sure that when we made the decisions to put this budget together, we kept all of that in mind. We wanted to make sure on the second one that we continue to use high-quality instructional materials. Now, since the pandemic hit, you probably heard about the learning loss and students kind of fell behind and regressed a little bit in that. Actually, our curriculum team worked very hard to not only try to, you know, make sure the loss was minimal, they took the opportunity to, and it was before my time in and kind of in-between principal and superintendent, they took the time to invest in and target some instructional areas, literacy and numeracy on math. They got high-quality instructional materials, I think you, if you've heard them, they're the Carnegie Math, they're the Wit and Wisdom, those materials are standard-aligned and are signed off as high-quality by the state. So these materials are what the state is saying that matched and will get us in the right direction. They're not necessarily easy to use, it takes training. Our staff, I think that some, depending on whether it's math, ELA, there's even some, we have Open Saiad for Science right now that's in the second year. They're in second or third year of each of these programs. I know the math and the Carnegie, this is the third year, I, I know that because I was teaching in the first and second year of the Carnegie implementation. So that being said, we've taken that so that we not only came out of this pandemic trying to, to make sure we, you know, get back to where we were, but to move forward, because we were not in a great place before the pandemic. So not only do we want to recover from the pandemic, we want to recover from where we were before the pandemic. And we've made great strides in implementation as far as that goes. Professional development for the staff, we want to make sure, and this is one of the budget asks that'll come up later on, and I'm trying to give the overview and tell the story first. We have instructional coaches. We call, I called them instructional specialists to try to be clear. We have an elementary, a, in math and ELA, and a secondary in math and ELA that we have onboard, they're our staff. They're working with the teachers to take the curriculum and make sure that the implementation gets done with fidelity and integrity, and they're working to help coach them, they're not, they're not administrators, they're coaches. They're there to support the teachers and help the teachers and get the teachers the training they need. And on the professional development days, we've had the, the companies come in and work with staff on Wit and Wisdom, Carnegie, and Envision. So so that's how we're supporting them, and the, the last item up there, and I put it in this, in this category here is, we also want to move forward, and we, and I know we've talked about this before. We do also have several warrants into the town that we're hoping for town meeting to vote on shortly. One of the warrants is a after-school program with a target for the middle school, but specifically for the complex in mind. That's something that is, is very important to us, you saw the meeting last week with robotics. We want to keep that momentum alive, and if we can get some of that funding from the warrant, my hope is, and I have positionally in the budget, something to oversee that and make sure that that gets implemented again. You saw the kids here, they're looking for it in sixth grade, I think we owe it to them to try to get that, you know, up and running. Then we have the second group of needs, and these are huge needs. Our, and this is not, this is not a Saugus problem. This is a problem that every, every district is facing, and that is the growing individual, or growing needs of individual students. Alright? We have students that are on IEPs, we have students that are on 504s, we have ELL students, and each of these sets of students requires special services or different services or individualized services that need to be addressed. That's the biggest single growing element of education that's changed from the time that I was in school. When I was in school, for the most part, and I know I'm dating myself, there was the teacher, there was the students, there was the textbook, there was the blackboard, go. And every student was treated the same. That's not the case in 2024, it just is not. The students in each class come into, into each class with various needs individually. We have about thirty-three percent of our whole population requires one of those three services, whether it's IEP, 504, or ELL. So we have about one in three of our students need extra services. We have a Title III audit coming for ELL that we're gonna need more ELL staff to help us deal with that. So and, and one of the biggest, one of the biggest changes, and we currently have it right now, we have, we have, we have adjustment counselors in each building. Right now, pretty much all of their day is tied up on service that are required by accommodations. But they're not the only students that need access to counseling. So that's one of the other asks that you'll see coming up. So those are our key needs. And again, it's not, these key needs are not necessarily Saugus key needs. They're how the classroom in 2024 is looking different. Alright? I, I am fortunate to have gone back into the classroom, taught over the last two years, and realized that the classroom in 2021, 2022, 2023 is different than it was in 2015, 2005, nineteen ninety-five. You know, when I started, it was a vastly different game, and, and the educators that we have need support. And that's what this is all about. So when you look at this, and if you, if you read the advocate, I, I talked about it. Students are first and foremost, and if you look at the budget, you'll see a lot of student needs. But if we don't help the teachers and make sure that the teachers have the support, then the instruction suffers. So it's, it's kind of that delicate balance of how we have to do it, and you'll see that as we talk about the budget that we have coming up. So those are, are pretty much the key needs moving forward. These next two slides, I'll be honest with you, not exactly the Thriller Minute stuff. I included them, you can look them over, but this is just how we did it. I mean, this is kind of how the sausage was made. So we developed this budget, I asked the principals to use their staff and stu- school councils and try to figure out what they needed from a building-based situation. They put together their school improvement plans based on the strategic plan and the district improvement plan. They, like I said, we, I've already kind of talked about, they met with the district admin, they got a feel for what was being supported in other, other departments. They met with the sys- the central leadership team, me, Paula, Susan, and Dawn all got together and tried to hash out where we saw the district moving. Principals gave us a list with evidence to support their request of what they're, they categorized as needs. And again, I, I asked them specifically to be it's lack of a better word, selfish, but they hadn't, I, I wasn't worried about what the complex was doing versus Belmonte versus the Vets. They have to worry about themselves at this time, and then we'll bring it together and come together as a group. I, I met with the principals and the central leadership team together and talked about their requests after we got them, asked them at times on some of the requests to try to explain to me how you see these matched the district improvement plan, matched our areas of focus. So there was a lot of back and forth with that. So those were the first five steps. I met with IT to make sure the technology was there, so I, I didn't leave that out. We then started to go through all the priorities. I did, along with the central leadership team, and this is, this is where it gets cumbersome, but you have to do it, and you have to look at, you know, your balancing requests, you're looking at how much money you have, you know there's only a finite, you know, pie there, and we, we have to put the pieces how they go. So we took that time, we looked over and tried to match and say, okay, is this ask really matching and going towards our vision? Is it matching the strategic plan? Is it actually going to help? And we tried to triage all of that. We came up with a tiered list of the requests that you have in front of you. This is by no means all of the requests that were gotten, these are the ones that have kind of been filtered through. And then ultimately, I asked Ms. Andrews to put together the document that you see in front of you to try to categorize and classify and, and put everything together. So she did that to, to make sure that it worked as far as line items and that type of thing. So there's where we are, we sit here, you got the philosophical vision, you've now got the nuts and bolts of how we did it, and now this budget sits in front of you. So as I go forward, what I'm gonna do is kind of explain, you know, where we're at, what we're asking for, why we're asking for it, how the numbers work. And then, after that, you guys have time to digest it all, look at all, see if, see if we're missing something, or we, we have too much. That's really your decision next week at the budget hearing is to kind of look at what we've asked for, see if what we, see if you, like we're aligned, I know I've talked to everybody on the school committee, I've talked to all the principals, they know what's in this. So I think you have some idea, but just in case you do, this is not the last day to, you know, worry about this, this is a work in progress. We're at really as far as publicly, day one. Okay, so right now, it's all been prepared, now it's the time to look at it, and we're on day one of this budget.
We're good until the twenty-ninth, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so as we go through this budget, we'll start with this, and this now I'm gonna be on, and I don't know if yours is page numbered. I'm really now looking at how your budget is, I'm gonna be on the fourth page for the most of the presentation. Okay, which is just this document right here. It doesn't necessarily look like what's up on the slide, but it looks like this document right here. For everybody in the crowd, everybody at home, if you online look at it, it's online on the website. Alright, so I tried to break this down into a couple of phases. The first phase, and I've already foreshadowed this, this is not anything that should surprise anybody. We start, we started the budget with what our FY24 appropriation was, and it was thirty-one million, six-hundred-and-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. The first ad we wanted to take into consideration was, given our contractually obligated increases, if nothing changed from FY24 other than honoring the bargain contracts, where would we be? And the cost increase is one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, thirteen dollars. It's an increase of four-point-three percent over FY25, which puts our baseline budget for FY25 at thirty-two million, nine-hundred-seventy-three thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight. Now I know, for everybody here, everybody at, at the table, everybody at home, everybody listening, I understand three-point, I'm sorry, one-point-three-six million dollars is a lot of money. Alright? However, I do want to say this because I think it's important to understand. The school committee negotiated with the teachers, the paraprofessionals, and the clerks to try to get them the pay that they need or they deserve in 2024. I know I said the students first, and that's all our priority, I think if you would talk to anybody in education, students are first. But if we don't keep, get, and retain high-quality educators, clerks, everybody in the system, we fall apart. So that's why that number is so, it, it's big, nobody's admitting that it's not big. Alright? But it is crucial to maintain the staff and the teachers that we're training. Because one of the things I've already talked about is, we've implemented new curriculum. We have highly, high-quality instructional material, that's great. But I can't just give you, that would be like me giving you this budget and say, okay, now you defend it. That's not how I want to do things. So we have to train the teachers, we have to train the teachers in the new system. We're investing time and energy in that, retention of teachers is huge. And again, I've, I've said this about three or four times already, and I, I'm sorry if I feel like, if it sounds like I'm repetitive. It's not just a Saugus problem. Teacher retention, employee retention is an issue everywhere. Alright? These are extremely challenging jobs with a high rate of burnout. They just, they need, they deserve the pay they have earned through the training and education they have. And, you know, I, I understand that the school committee gave raises out whatever, with every contractual raise that you get. There's gonna be about a third of the people that are happy with it and think it was just right. There's gonna be a third of the people that think it was too much, there's gonna be a third of the people who think it's too little. I think you tried to do the baby bear, the, you know, the middle ground, just right. And I, and whether you did or you didn't, it doesn't really matter, it's the reality of what we're living in. So I don't want anybody to look at that number and say, whoa. I know you will, and I did too. Alright, these are big numbers, I get that. But I think we need to retain the workforce that we have. So I'll come down off that mountain and get, and get back into the other things, so I, I'm sorry if I, I went through it. But that, to be honest with you, is more than half of the increased asks that I have. So that's why I wanted to stop there and, and really explain why, that's not a little number. It's significant, but so it is having high-quality teachers and retaining them. High-quality paraprofessionals, nurses, counselors, all of our specialists, all of our clerks, everybody, it's important to retain them, because continuity is huge. And I can go back into, you know, we came out of the pandemic and everybody was a little skittish. One of the things that I think that students and staff and people in general need is stability and consistency. So that continuity is extremely important. My entire, one of my biggest challenges for this district, and one of my biggest responsibilities is stability. We need stability. And by changing teachers and staff all the time, we lose stability. Okay? So that gets us to what is titled by a lot of people as the level service budget, that's what we have now, plus the contractual increases. So then we go into budget requests, and we broke this down into four buckets. Alright, that's in the front sheet. Bucket one's district-wide, bucket two's the complex, bucket three is Belmonte, bucket's four's the Vets. Now, there's some of the, like, the district-wide one is high in the sense that there's more in there, but almost nothing in there are actually employees that are gonna be working in district office. It's, I put it in district for the sake of putting it somewhere, these people will be allocated to places. So the first two positions you see up there are the instructional specialists, they're coming out of the ESSER funds. We have to take the employees that we still need out of grants and put them in the LEA, because that's the fiscally responsible thing to do. This district, and again, I take zero credit for this, because I wasn't even here. This district did an incredible job of minimizing that number. There are other districts who have dozen and dozens of employees being funded out of grants, and the grants are running dry, and now they're overstaffed. And they're not overstaffed in the sense that they have more people than they need, they're overstaffed and they have most people than they can afford. So these instructional specialists, these instructional coaches, those two positions are coming, are coming out of ESSER and going to the LEA, they exist, they're people, they're bodies. We have a computer technician that's currently, half his salary is being paid out of ESSER. We want to make that a whole salary and make sure that it goes where it's supposed to go. We have a instructional specialist where half the money was in ESSER, half should go to the LEA. The other half will come out of Title III, because it's ELL, and that's where it belongs. We have a, a part-time clerk that went to a full-time clerk for the curriculum department, there was only a half-time clerk. That's a full-time clerk that currently is there. There's thirty-eight thousand dollars for non-unit raises, it's a reserve. And then the last two parts, the three-point-zero ELL teachers and the and the 2.0 district substitute teachers, they're in the district, but those people may never see this district building. I put them there because we're going to put them where they need to go. We're going to have, we're going to need ELL services for our English language learners. We need probably more than three teachers, but the three teachers that we have up there in there will be deployed to the buildings as needed. And they already have needs, but I just don't want to, I don't want to walk into a budget today and say it goes here, 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 and have it go a different place. And two district-wide substitutes would go a long way towards stability with absences. And again, those would be the, the building substitutes of old and at least some of the buildings could have that. And that way they have that position locked in. And again, continuity and stability. It's people who would also know the students. All right, so that's the district-wide positions that I have or the district-wide asks that I have. Bucket two. This slide's a little bit more cumbersome or a little bit more challenging to follow and I apologize for that, but I'll do the best I can to articulate it. It's what you have in the middle. It's not, the slide's no different than what you have in the middle of the sheet here. But I do understand that, you know, it can be a little wordy and I'll talk us through this. All right, number one, we, Ms. Trainer came up last week and talked about special education and how math inclusion worked at the complex. We want to do the same thing for ELA and add that in. So that's the special education teacher. Three program leaders, and I know I'm skipping something, but I'll come back because I, I want to tell a story and have some momentum here. Three program leaders, stipends, those are people who are already here. We have three programs for next year. One being open side ed, one being investigating history, that we would like a lead teacher or a program leader to be there so that they can be the point person on each of them. We're not asking for a coach or an instructional specialist, just somebody to make sure the implementation goes. Be kind of the liaison between the principal and the professional development as far as that goes. It's not, it's, there's no additional staff. It's just a stipend call. We've also talked about, and this is one of those, when you say those meetings, you look at the list of meetings and you say, oh, I was checking boxes. We weren't checking boxes in those meetings. They were productive conversations. One of them was to restructure inclusion at the middle school. So right now there's, right now there's five teachers and five para professionals in the, in, in the inclusion model that we have at the middle school. We want to change that to six teachers, four para professionals. Again, that seems to be from an educational standpoint, the best solution to what we need. And the other two things are additional curriculum supplies and resources. That would be, I'm not going to say textbooks because I know we jokingly said it before the meeting. We don't really have textbooks anymore, but there's some of the stuff that we need to keep, those are the consumables that we need to keep going. So that's the ask of the, of the Sogas Middle High School complex. I forget, you guys don't have to turn the page. I have to flip the slide. The STEAM Academy here at Belmonte, this one right here has the additional up. I said I was going to do something and I didn't and I forgot and I apologize. I, I did skip one main box and it was a big box, so I, I apologize for that. There is a full-time complex alternative educational director in, in the books for the LEA right now. If you look in the line items, it will be under the principal line item as another person captured in that principal line item. This person right, right now we have an early college program that I think has gone very well. We just had, for lack of a better word, early college graduation for semester one where 28 kids got college credit from North Shore. It's a big program. We got a grant to do it. We're running it. We've had some success, but I think we can repurpose that position to not only embrace early college, but embrace a lot of the alternative programs that Mr. Sullivan has tried to work on and talked about in the last few years. He's wanted to have potential for having classes that are non-traditional, not necessarily following the same schedule as the regular school day. So kids coming to school a little later, staying later outside the school day. We already have a programs that, for special education that may go longer than the school day. The warrant that I have for middle school enrichment, the middle school robotics and all that is outside the school day. When we built this complex, we as a group and a lot of you here today were part of that team that built it. A lot of the people watching were part of that team that built it. One of the things we wanted to do, and COVID shut it down temporarily, but we wanted that complex to not close at 2:15 and not be restricted to organize sports or organize groups only. We wanted to open that complex up to our student, up for our students. That's why I put the warrant in to town meeting for support for those programs. However, in order to do that and make sure that it's safe, we need an administrator in charge. And I, I, when I talk to people, I don't know if I'm, I mean, maybe I'm dating, I'm looking for a second shift person to come in at noon, 11 o'clock, stay till seven, eight o'clock and make sure that the programs we put in are running smoothly and be the contact person for them. Does that include early college? Yes. Does that include special ed? Yes. Does it include tutoring? Yes. Does it include enrichment activities? Yes. But it's the person who bottles that all together. So that again, and I'm not trying to say take work away from Mr. Sullivan, but I'm not going to ask my, you know, middle high school principal to get to work at 5:30 and have to stay to eight o'clock at night. We could do that. He won't be, he won't be doing it very long because that's the type of thing that absolutely crushes momentum. We need somebody to help out in that way. And I think we're well on the way to doing it. I think that, that's why you get grants. And that's, that's a case where you get grants, you hire people in grants. And then when you bring it into the LEA, that started the conversation. It becomes part of what they do and then it embraces a bigger picture. So I didn't mean to miss that and I'm sorry if I did. So I can explain that in more detail if we need to. To the Belmonte STEAM Academy, there are three additional positions. One is already in place, the special ed para. We've already hired. We need that right now. We've found funding in the FY24 budget, but it's not recurring funding. So we need to establish a position to fund that position for next year. The middle school music teacher is something that we realized that we need in order to cover all of the teachers and the teacher preps and everything to make the middle school schedule work. They needed an additional, what they called specialist, which is an encore or, or it's, it ended up being a music teacher. And Dr. Lukey decided that's what she wanted to go with. That's what we have right now. I think it's working out pretty well. So if it's a music teacher and I, I mean, it's, it's a specialist that takes the kids while the teachers are doing something else, while they, while they get their short break. Okay, so that position right now is being funded out of ESER. And where that comes in is that's holding the schedule of the Belmonte together. And the third one is an adjustment counselor. And I'll be honest with you, I do understand, and if people are old school, I know that, you know, when I went to high school, I don't know if there was an adjustment counselor. Maybe there was, but if there was, there was one for the district. When I first started teaching, it wasn't a position that was very big. Now it's important. They do have adjustment counselors. I'm not saying they don't. But again, in our meetings with the principals, this was something that Dr. Lukey really expressed not only urgency in, but she was, I'd say, said, okay, you need it, but you need everything. So why do you need that? She justified that right now, the adjustment counselors that we have are seeing the students that require services and have minimal, if any, time to deal with students that don't require services based on accommodation. And as we all know as parents or grandparents or just people that know children, children have times where they need to see someone. So I, that, this would be, this would take up some of that and then make sure that referrals get addressed, make sure crises get handled and everything else as far as that goes. She came up with the numbers. It's definitely something that should be added in. Veterans. Veterans you'll see is a little bit more. There are three additional staff members to develop the program. We're trying to, we're trying to keep our kids in district. For a couple of reasons. One, financially it's the responsible thing to do. Two, it helps the kids stay in the environment that they're familiar with, with their friends. You know, out of district is not just, it's not always a monetary thing. Sending a kid out of district can be traumatic. So if we can put this in place and service the needs of the Sogas students in the Sogas public schools, that goes a long way. So it's, it's got, that's got the benefit of not only being financially responsible and being, it will save us money in the long run. It's better for the kids as well. So again, that's why those three positions are up there. The third block right there is a para professional that already exists. Same as the middle school. We brought in a parent that's needed by student services. We found the money, but we need a recurring funding source, so we need the position. Put in an assistant principal at that, at the veterans. Right now, Mr. Mondello's at that building. He's the only administrator in a building of about 500 students. It's, I'm not looking for an assist, I know what people are going to say, pre-K to one, you don't need a vice, I'm not talking about a vice principal. I'm somebody, I'm talking about somebody to come, come in and help with the administration of the building. Help again to support teachers and support students. I'm not looking for, I'm not saying we have, have to have somebody coming down there to lay down the law to a preschool kid. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about right now, we have a principal in a building with 500 kids that doesn't have another administrator. And the last one, again, for the same reason, is the middle school, an adjustment counselor to meet the needs of the students that need the counseling services. Now, if you look at this, and let me try to wrap up a little bit of the story before I turn the page and you can see how much the whole thing costs or all of you are looking at it and can see how much it costs already. The story right here is this. I know that class size is an issue. I know that everybody wants everything. I know that in a perfect world, we'd ask for $50 million. We'd get $50 million. But you know what? If we got $50 million, I'm sure it wouldn't be enough. Because there's always, it's like building a new house. You're always going to find problems. Or building a new school and finding little things that don't work out perfectly. But right now, and I can, I, again, I'm in a unique situation where I don't think there's a whole lot of superintendents that can say within the last 12 months, they've been in a high school classroom or they've taught in a classroom. I have. And the advantage that I can see is this. I've had classrooms with 24 kids. Would it be easier if it was 18? Sure, maybe. But when you have an overwhelming population that has IEPs or they're ELL students in that classroom, what better supports me is another teacher or, or a, a ELL tutor that can come in and support me and the students in my classroom. So that's how I sort of look at it. If you, if I had 24 kids, great, take three away. That gives me 21 better. But I still have the same inherent problem of the students I have in front of me have some unique individualized needs that another provider helping me out is the better fix. All right, so I think again, to support our teachers, I think the support is to get more staff to support the students with individualized needs. And that's sort of the narrative. I apologize if that dragged out a little bit. I, I do, I do know that I'm doing everything wrong from a teaching standpoint right now. Right now, everybody should have stood up a few times. It should have been student-centered. So I, I apologize in that. I know these lectures get a little bit long. Cost containment's based on retirements and turnovers. It's minimal this year. Right now it's at $78,000. That's minimal. So what we have as an end for the overall breakdown, and you'll see, we have our FY24 appropriation. It's $31,607,625. Our fixed cost increases were $1,366,013. The budget request that we have is $1,294,897. For a total increase based on fixed cost increases and the budget request of $2,660,910. For an, for the FY25 budget of $34,268,535, which I led with. And teaching that frame the lesson. I started with that number. I'm ending with that number. And this is how we got there. All right, we told the story. We did that. I do want, I do want to say a few other things before I, I turn the page. I know, I, I know it's a lot of money. I, I'm well aware of my ask being a lot of money. And I know that everybody, every department in town, every department in the state, every school system in the state, in the country needs additional funding. This is not really a wish list. This is a list of, and what we have here are needs of our district and the changing student populations that we have. I've tried to work and I, I have worked very successfully to collaborate with the town. And I do want you, I do want you to know that, and I, I'll read this, this out because it's really important. I think that while this, these budgets seem like they're done in a vacuum, they're not. Right? We met with a lot of people and a lot of people were involved in this. I am just the person either fortunate enough or unfortunate enough to be talking to all of you and trying to explain why we need it. I believe that the school department is part of a team and the team is the town of Sogas. We're one of many departments, but we're a huge department. We're a huge department because we have a lot of employees. And we have a lot of employees if the pandemic taught us nothing else. Teachers are needed. Educators are needed. And I'll say educators instead of teachers, so I include everybody. Cause even our clerks are educators. Cause the clerks in the building are dealing with students on a day-to-day basis. They're not a clerk at a, they're not a receptionist at a dentist office. They're people who are dealing and taking part in the educational process of our students. So I think when you talk about that, it is costly. It is going to be one of the biggest, you know, bills the town has to afford. But we have to invest in our, our kids. As I think most of you know, I'm a lifelong Sargonian. I was born in the Sogas General Hospital on Chestnut Street. So I've never lived, I've never left Sogas. I think this community is worth investing in our kids. And that's why I'm doing what I'm doing now. And that's why I'm putting together and put together this budget for our students and to support our staff so they can support our students. Cause I can't do this alone and I don't do this alone. There's teachers and, and, and parents out there and educators out there that are helping out. I see the parents, you know, in the stands at the, at the games. I mean, a lot of the parents that are sitting here tonight have kids and children that are the same age as my youngest. And I see them. They're part of the, they're part of the solution as well. So I do want to say, before I wrap this up, that I feel very passionately about this. I said it to my instructional leadership team. You know, I said it and I looked at it and I said, okay, this budget, I feel, I, I feel strongly about this. I believe that this is what we need. Again, I'm not saying this is everything we need. There's no, you know, magic button that we're going to push and be done. If you think I missed something, I'm, I'm reasonable. I'm, I'm not the, I'm not perfect. We could have missed something. But this is what we put together to try to, you know, think of our students first. So my last slide is, again, the items that we're putting together is not a wish list. It's trying to stay up to date with our ever-changing student population and our ever-changing student needs. Cause it could be the same kids that came out of that pandemic that need a little bit that need a little bit more support than they wouldn't have. These are prioritized, and I think we need them to, in order to be as successful as possible. It's not the only stuff that was presented to me. There was other things presented and that were omitted and that we'll keep our eye on for future and keep our eye on potentially for warrants or something else. And if grants come up that can, you know, supersede some of the stuff, that's fine too. But right now, everything in this budget comes together, meets our strategic plan, and we'll put this district forward. And again, my whole goal is to be transparent and clear. I don't have all the answers. If you wanted somebody with all the answers, I'm not the person. I just want to stabilize this and make this district the best I can for the students of Saugus. So without anything else, I think I'm out of my sheets. I had plenty of stuff here, and I apologize if I jumped around a little bit. I apologize if I jumped out of order or confused anybody. I tried to go as best I could through order, but if anybody had me as a student, I'm just kind of looking, it could well be, there's plenty, I have plenty of students that are teachers and, and parents right now. I tend to try to keep to a script, but I got to be honest with you, I had a script on this the whole time and I never looked at it. So, um, so I tried to do the best that I could to try to present anything. And again, today gave you an overview. Hopefully you have some, you now have an understanding of the story behind the budget. Take some time, look at it, look it over. You have questions, you know where I am. And next week, we can work together to make sure that it goes from a superintendent-proposed budget to a school committee budget.
I think you did a great job there, Mr. Hashem, thank you. I'm not going to ask a question, but I'm going to make a quick statement for you. Um, what blows me away is one and every three kids require services.
Yep.
That's a crazy, crazy number to me. And we sat here two years ago, listened to how special ed was bankrupt in the district and how it got decimated and everything else. And let me tell you, now we're in a pickle because of it. So, um, yeah, we need to sharpen the pencils on this one.
And I should, I should say, it's not just, it's, special education is one of those areas, but we have a lot of kids that have a lot of traumas that aren't necess, I mean, they're dealing with social emotional issues, they're dealing with stress and anxiety. And for anybody who thinks stress and anxiety is not real, you're wrong. It's a very real thing, and these students are dealing with this. And the students are dealing with a lot of stuff that I know I didn't have to deal with. I mean, the cell phones, the, the internet, all that stuff are stuff that right now I think has complicated, has made life easier, but it has complicated life too. So I think, I think, I don't think that's going to go away. So I think the counselors are important, the teachers are important, all the support staff's important, everybody has an importance there, and that's what I wanted to know.
Absolutely, absolutely. So anything, anybody want to add anything before we wrap it up?
No, I just want to say thank you very much for taking the time. It was presented very well. And
Absolutely.
I can tell you right now, I will be looking at this with a fine-tooth comb. I can promise you that. Because I promised the district I would do the best I can, and I, and I will, for all of you, all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and that's, again, that's why I presented to you. That's why we're not deciding on this today.
Yeah.
That's what, it's all, it's all part, uh, this is literally, we, we worked on it. My team's been working on it for months. But it's day one being presented to everybody, and more eyes on it doesn't hurt my feelings, to be honest with you.
Yeah. I want to thank everybody for coming out too.
Oh, yeah, sorry, thank you, everybody.
It's a tough one to sit through sometimes because you, there's no public comment and there's no banter with the school committee. But next week, anybody who wants to come and talk is more than welcome. It'll be, uh, it's actually a lot of, is that Wendy laughing back there? It's actually, it's, it's, you know, we're not working against each other. We're all trying to work together, so that's what I like about it. Um, you know, whatever we may not see, you guys might see. So just feel free to come here and bounce some stuff off us, you know?
Please.
Yeah. So, uh, anybody else got anything before we get a motion to close?
Motion George, right?
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? All right, motion carries 4-0. Thank you, everybody, we'll see you next week.